I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Cincella.
Here.
Mrs. Holt. Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Sillsby.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman Holden, Alderman Davidson are excused. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor. City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitritt. Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belvall. City Treasurer Dean Hart.
Jamie Maitritt and Chuck Schaefer is excused. Mike Parks is here on behalf of Chuck Schaefer. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I want to remind everyone that these proceedings are being videotaped. Currently, they're still on, they're on the web. Last week, we had a little difficulty. Took an extra day. We had a little technical difficulty Rich ran into. But they are on the web usually the next day. We're still working with Lindenwood. I had some correspondence with them and Charter again, basically saying that, you know, IT folks to get the devices connected, primary switch on campus. Bit of troubleshooting still left, but, you know, in other words, once again, we're going to celebrate when they get it hooked up. But anyway, we are getting closer. But in the meantime, this is usually available the next day on our web. With that said, I just want to remind everybody, Alderman, last meeting, a lot of us didn't use the microphones. So please, when you speak, please take a moment, position the mic, and speak into it. Folks, if you, during public participation, make sure that you, when you're called upon, get into the microphone and speak so that we can get everything recorded. Okay? With that being said, I'd ask the Boy Scouts from Troop Nine to maybe come forward and stand and lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Troop Nine, is it still a union school? No? Where is he from now?
Christ UCC down on 14th and A.
Okay. Sometimes those changes. They were a union school for many years, and they're here tonight working, what?
Sorry, Cub Scouts still are.
Some are. Okay. Cub Scouts. And they're working on their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. Boys will come forward. One of you or two of you or whatever. Just start when you're ready.
(Inaudible) to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, have you already been to summer camp this summer? Yes? I remember those years greatly. Mr. Davidson is here. We're glad you're right. I heard you were questionable, so I excused you. Okay?
Oh, thank you. I was just hurrying.
Hurrying. Okay. You're excused. Okay. At this time, before we start public participation, I want to remind everybody, as, whether it be the public or the consort or anyone, that we continue to use good character as we speak and that we try to limit our comments after called upon to about three minutes. There's some, in the programs, it gives a little bit more detail about the parameters that we adopted several months ago. The other thing I want to mention is that, in case anyone's new this evening, if we would have an emergency such as a reason to evacuate for a fire or smoke in a building, we'd ask that you leave calmly, go out the front door, carefully cross the street, and gather in front of the St. Clair County Courthouse sign. So we can kind of look around and make sure that we believe everybody that was in this body here. While we don't have a roll call, we can kind of look around and say, hey, these folks, where are they? The other thing, if we have a storm ever, when you're in this room, we'd carefully go out the doors to the lobby. The police will be out there to escort you and show you as well. But right across the street, right across the hall from the Clerk's office are stairs that lead downstairs to an area that we have designated as a storm shelter. So I share that with you for those important reasons. At this time, I will open public participation. We have no public hearing this evening. So is there anyone who would like to address the console? Please raise your hands. Yes, sir.
Could you want to do a moment for Mary McHugh?
You heard me. Yeah, let's pause and do that first. I was going to do that in a little bit, but let's go ahead and do it now. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't heard, our good friend Mary McHugh, who has been here at these council meetings for many years, who served for forty-nine years as an educator, forty-three of those were at Franklin School. Tremendous lady, past township official, township trustee for a number of years, and really on the original Belvo, what am I thinking of? The, not Racial Harmony, she was on the Racial Harmony, but the Human Rights, Human Relations Commission. Served on that from the beginning. Mary was dedicated to the city and passed away last Friday. There will be a service for Mary in her hometown. On Thursday will be the funeral. Wednesday evening, the visitation will be at the Bailey Funeral Home in Vianna, Illinois. Funeral will be the next day at her church. But for those of you who can't travel that distance, there is plans in the making to have a memorial slash celebration of her life service probably in the first ten days or so of August. The family's working with the school district right now. We're tentatively, we're thinking it's going to be at Franklin School, which would be the most appropriate, and we'll keep you informed. But that certainly would be something that would be very, very appropriate for all of us, I think, if possible, to attend. So at this time, would you pause with me and offer a moment of silence for our friend Mary McHugh? Thank you very much for your patience. Okay, at this time, we'll open public participation.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Ave. Got good news this evening. After two years and two months, the sidewalk at 10 East Washington Street is now ADA compliant. And just in time, because the anniversary of signing of the ADA law is coming up this Saturday. It'll be fourteen years ago that it was signed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak this evening? Hearing that, I will close public participation, and we'll move on into the regular portion of the meeting. I'd first like to ask Debbie Belvall, the Director of Parks and Rec, to come to the microphone to give us a one-year update on our, what has become a very exciting project, the Belvo Dog Park. And Debbie?
Hi. I'm very proud to give you a little update with the dog park. Our dog park is almost a year old. We opened August 3rd of last year. We have four hundred and twenty-one members to the dog park. Two hundred eighty-seven are the parents to those dogs. And so that's eighty percent that are city residents. The dog park took a while to develop, and it was because of a lot of donations and groups that all went behind it. We had a dog park committee. We got some donations from Purina, Nestle Purina. We got donations from Barcom and Ultra Play. In my opinion, and a lot of us at the Parks Department, we feel that we have the premier dog park in the area. It's two and a half acres. It has a small and a large. And to recognize our dog park and the success that we have, we've invited the members to have a party on August 2nd. And I did pass those invitations out to all of you elected officials. We would like you to join us and say thank you to all, everybody that supported the project because we're very pleased with what we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Yeah, that project took a while, but it goes to show your perseverance and a lot of dedication from a lot of people. But I really have to credit the Park Board and the Parks Division here. We, they really persevered and got this thing going, and it's been a nice addition to the city and to that area downtown. So I thank you very much and look forward to your anniversary and many more. At this time, we'll move into the approval of the minutes from the last city council meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the July 7th, 2014 city council meeting. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Mr. Heisler. I hear a second. Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor. I had submitted a letter that was to the President of the Homeowner Association. It was part of the discussion that I asked to be an exhibit. I know Mr. White had read a letter in relation to the German Christmas market. It was marked as Exhibit A. I'd like that that letter that I submitted for the record be marked as Exhibit B.
Okay. You copied that?
Don't deal. Yes, sir.
So we have a motion, a motion and a second, and we have the comments noted by Alderman Hayden. Any additions? All in favor of accepting the minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Martian carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to pay the claims, payroll, and disbursements. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler.
Second.
Second, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alderman Randall.
Thank you. I guess it would be the claim sheet for, under general fund, under Police Department, to Lindenwood for thirty-eight hundred fifty-two dollars.
College tuition, I would share, isn't it, Chief? I mean, I'll, we, if you'll call my office tomorrow or make a note or, just email me, Alderman Randall. I'll double-check it since Jamie's, I suspect it's a direct payment for college tuition, people working on their master's programs. But I would, I will double-check that for you if you just give me a jingle, okay?
Thank you.
Addition, besides that question, hearing no other particular questions additional to that concern, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports. Housing report of cash receipts for fiscal year 2014, 2015. What's your pleasure?
I move they be accepted and filed.
Motion by Alderman Cincella.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion. All in favor of accepting and filing the housing reports, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Treasurers report city of Belvo funds and statement of cash and investment for June 2014. What's your pleasure?
Receiving and filing.
Motion by Alderman Seibert. Second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion. All in favor of receiving and filing, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Oral reports. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor. If there's no objection, I'd like to read the five motions together and vote on them together.
Any problem with that?
I would like to have a separated.
Okay.
One, I'm sorry.
So one, one goes separate, then go two through five?
Yes.
Okay. Motion one, to accept territory filter building change order number two from Cordy Lujon in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on that item? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Abstain.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Heisler, you want to proceed with the rest of them?
Yes. Motion number two, to accept a proposal from Gonzalez Companies LLC to perform a storm sewer study regarding the 29th Street flooding issue in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars. Motion three, to accept an engineering proposal from Gonzalez Companies LLC for the East Creek One and One improvements in the amount of five hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. Excuse me, that was East Creek I and I improvements. Motion number four, to accept a proposal from Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated to upgrade the B Street pump station in the amount of seventy-two thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Fifth motion, to accept a proposal from Tubal, Wade, and Merson to implement a cloud GIS program in the amount of five thousand per year for five years. That includes providing a disk containing quarterly data upgrades. So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Second by Alderman Hayden. Those four additional motions coming from Master Sewer. Any questions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Alderman Sillsby?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the low bid of fourteen thousand five thirty-one from Jack Schmidt Ford for the purchase of a 2014 Ford Focus for the Economic Development Department. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, has there ever been an analysis done to, is this truly an advantage to the taxpayers to provide vehicles versus paying mileage?
According to Jamie, now, we, Jamie, our CPA, has, as much as sometimes they're used with you follow the guideline for mileage, as long as these cars last us. I mean, the car that we're, the car that we're getting rid of was a 1998, I believe. So we've had that vehicle since 1998. We believe that, Jamie still believes in her analysis that, you know, and we, they only have one car for that department that they share. So there's not that-
Or does it stay during night?
It stays here. It stays on the lot. But it's, it's been the way we've had to practice in that department for years. They don't get called out at night. The people who take cars home are the ones who get called out in the middle of the night for various emergency functions.
And I'd say, I'm just questioning, you know, with a tight budget, you know, it's-
Well, we've gone to-
Fifteen thousand dollars.
The four-cylinder engine, and we've gone to more efficiency. And like I said, this car will last them a long time. Alderman Davidson?
Alderman Hayden, I don't know specifically, but I think the IRS-
Use the mic there, do.
I'm sorry. The IRS allows about fifty cents, a little bit over fifty cents per mile. And at that rate, fifty thousand miles would be twenty-five thousand dollars rebate it back. That would be every fifty thousand miles that we put on the vehicle. I think it's, the, I think it's a savings, tremendous savings, to buy our own vehicle than rather than reimburse.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second to, yes, ma'am?
Not only this, but this is the topic right now is what, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is not, this is the topic tonight, this one, to purchase this. But I think we need to look into cars going home. The only ones I think that should go home are police and fire. Your streets and sewer and all that, they could come pick them up. With the tight budget, I don't think they need to be taken home because that's, we're paying for their gas to go and come to work every day. Much less, how often do they get called out at night, the other departments besides fire and police? I'd like to see a log of that. And I think they should start keeping a log, especially if they're using city vehicles and they go out after hours. We're paying for gas for them to drive from their home to work. That's every day, morning and afternoon or evening, whenever. It's, it just is not right. So we need to take a look at this, and I have to say no on this. We're spending money. Look at the controversy that there was when you got your car. Nobody, the mayor, they didn't even, the people didn't want to be paying for city people's cars. So I think this should have a little bit more of a study on it before we start giving, pretty soon, we're going to be giving janitors cars, the janitor a car. I'm sorry, no.
Alderman Galetti.
Do you know off the top of your head how many miles the 1998 car currently-
Microphone, please.
Use the microphone so we can.
Do you know how many miles that 1998 car has on it, right off the top of your head?
Emily might know.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but we're around ninety to a hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two hundred.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I understand, this was talked about in budget the last two years. We put it off last year. They agreed to hold off, and we were trying to massage the budget. It was talked about this year again, which would be the time, really, for the next time to have these discussions, probably again, in great detail, but certainly understand tonight's appropriate since we're having a vote. So if there's no further questions, we have a motion and a second to approve this low bid of fourteen thousand five thirty-one from Jack Schmidt. Alderman Schneider.
That's not that many miles for that old of a car. I mean, it's ridiculous that we're letting them keep it. It'll run.
It's got some issues, and right now-
And then they drive their cars and they can-
Okay, you voiced your opinion. I think we have a motion. We have a second. And, you know, at this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Eyes have it. Alderman Sillsby, we can move on.
Motion to approve the downtown streetscape in-ground electrical boxes as recommended by the staff at a total cost of one hundred and twenty-six thousand two oh eight twelve. Work to be done by Glazier Electric. So moved.
Second.
Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Yes, sir.
How was this contractor chosen?
This contract, it was not the original contractor who put the stuff in. I believe that was Elektrico. This contractor helped us out, and I don't, I honestly can't tell you where you, I know where you think, I know where you're going here.
Was there a formal bid, is my question?
I don't remember if there was several years ago or not, but this contractor came to committee and helped us brainstorm in how to solve some of these problems. Now, Tom Bell, before he even went to work for Glensor, had his company here in town, and Tom, at the time he had Belvo Electric, helped us design the lights and was on the committee. At that time, he was President of Belvo Main Street, and we, as we put together the street lighting program with the new streetscape. Tom has done a ton of research on these and helped us figure out, when these parts started going bad, how we could come up with a solution. He and Tim and Kenny worked very hard to come up with a solution. Glensor, as you may remember, we approved to fix some of them before. And it's only right that they've got the, they've now figured it out, and we've got the track record, that we want to get these all fixed before, unfortunately, we could have a shock, a shock or a shard in them, or also before we could have a failure, before particularly the spring, the fall events. I would hate to have the power panels go out when the Beach Boys are here, or the Chili Cook-Off or anything else. They, this part of proven, has proven that it failed. It's no longer recognized like it was when we, when we did the streetscape. All these things were approved at that time, and it's, it's one of these things that it's had failure to it.
Now, the work, Mayor, that we're going to do, where they're going to have to go back and retrofit this new system in, it's not going to do any damage to the existing-
No, no.
Streetscape that we have.
No, this is down in the wells that have been created. There's a device that has to be, I didn't ask Tom to bring it tonight, but-
It's got it.
You do have it. Well, it's, it's a, it's a device that's going to have to be replaced. Like I said, they researched this quite a while to make sure we figured it out exactly. But we believe now we've solved the prob, well, we have solved the problem because we did, what did we do, Tom? How many are ready? We did eight of them. And we've had success. And now the, you know, Mr. Vaughn is recommending, and it went to committee and unanimously passed, passed finance, that we would get these fixed.
And it was brought to my attention, Mayor, if we had a, you know, a shard somewhere and knocked out one, it could potentially knock out two or three stands. Is that going to lead to some of that?
Well, it could, it could knock out two at a time, right, Tom?
It won't underproduce.
No, but the old ones could.
It would, it would.
And they did. They would take out two at a time.
So that's-
When they failed.
Okay. Good.
So. Alderman Schneider.
But we didn't go out for bids on this? I don't, I mean, we should go out for bids. That's over ten thousand dollars, right?
Well, when we started out making some of the first repairs, we repaired the first one or so, and it wasn't ten thousand. It was a small, you know, relatively, and it was exploratory thing. And I think after we, after this group came to our rescue and researched it and did the work, and finally, after quite a bit of homework, figured out how to solve it, it would be pretty wrong then to turn around and, you know, first of all, they've, they've learned what they needed to do to help us. Kenny and, Kenny and Tom spent a lot of time on this.
I am wrong. It's supposed to go out for bid. But if they're-
We're, we're asking tonight that we would accept Glensor as the person to get this done and fix these. Right now, they have the knowledge, the experience. They came in, they weren't the ones who originally installed it, so it's not like they-
So they figured it out so some other one could figure it out, maybe with a cheaper bid.
Well, I will tell you this. Without going into a lot of details, Mr. Vaughn did make some exploratory calls and talked very candidly to a couple people he knew in the industry, and they came right back to him and said, this is a very good price. This is a very good price that you're getting to do this work. And we are under a little bit of a time limit now, and I know you don't want to hear that, but we have a September 19th date of a lot of people downtown. And what we've learned from all this is that in recent, at the art show just recently in May, that they failed two at a time. And it would be pretty embarrassing. Now, we've learned a lot, but they're starting to, they were starting to pop off much more quickly. So, you know, we're here tonight to try to solve this problem so we're not embarrassed and so nobody gets hurt. And we're here using the people who've helped us solve the problem. And we have done some, we have done some research to make sure that we were getting a good quote, a good price on this. So I feel very comfortable. We're very price-conscious. We really are. So we have a motion, and we have a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Eyes have it. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the bid of fifteen thousand six ninety-two sixty from Shido Valley Equipment for the purchase of a two-zero turn mower, for two zero-turn mowers for the Parks Department. This was also recommended by the Park Board. Motion to approve. Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Schmidt. I knew though for a fact this was bid out, and this was the most lowest, most responsible bid. Any questions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the bid of twenty-three thousand three ninety-one from Jack Schmidt Ford for the purchase of a one-new three-quarter-ton pickup truck for the Parks Department. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the bid of thirteen thousand nine twenty-eight, which includes installation from Tiger Waterfront Products for the purchase of an ADA steel fishing dock. Motion to, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Schmidt. This is far south side. You have a question, Alderman? It's for south side. Any other questions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the Art on the Square lease. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, do we use this building at all for any city stuff?
It's been on occasion, but primarily, it's Art on the Square. We've had, we go in there every year. They host a reception for us when we have Veterans Day. There's been a few other times that we've used it for some special city things. We used it for the Paint to Town. We used it for, I can think of others, but not, it's not used regularly by the city. It's used primarily. They use it for a whole month for their boutique at Christmas. They use it for some art shows. They have some gallery showings. They use it for their, the whole month prior to Art on the Square. They're busy in there. They have meetings throughout the- There's been a few other times that we've used it for some special city things. We used it for the Paint to Town, we used it for, I can think of others, but not, it's not used regularly by the city. It's used primarily, they use it for a whole month for their boutique at Christmas, they use it for some art shows, they have some gallery showings, they use it for their, the whole month prior to Art on the Square, they're busy in there. They have meetings throughout the year. Art on the Square, from the minute the one's over, they start again to start for the next year and it's an ongoing process. So it's used often.
It's, I mean, it's a wonderful organization, they do great things. The question that has been raised to me and it's my job as an Alderman to provide the conduit to raise those questions is, if it's primarily used by Art on the Square, why are the taxpayers paying the utilities?
Well, if I remember, if you heard my explanation when this came up, probably during the budget, the first time, this building was given to the city by, at that time, longtime attorney Rick Heiligenstein, who since has passed away, was in that office there for probably, I don't know, thirty, forty years at Thirty Public Square. He came to Mayor Kern at that time, before I became mayor, and offered the building to the city and sat and discussed with Mayor Kern how they could, what they could use it for with some special way. Mark had indicated the art program because it just had had the first season or second season under its belt. They met with Patty Gregory and this is where it came from. When the question was raised to me back during the budget process, I was asked if we had a contract. I thought maybe we did have an agreement, not finding any and I had a brief conversation with Chairman Kern. He said, "No, everything at that time, the council was informed," but it was a handshake. So we agreed, if you remember, to put it into, to what we were currently, what we've had as a handshake for the last eleven to twelve years and what we've been living by, we put it to writing and Garrett worked with Tom Barnett, the treasurer of Art on the Square and Patty Gregory and came up with this document. This reflects what the building's been used for, it reflects the way we've been handling it and it's a very, as you all know, I think we all agree, Art on the Square has been a fabulous catalyst for redevelopment downtown and for the city as a whole and, boy, I'd sure hate to change a good thing. But it's here tonight for you just to officially memorialize it and put it into a contract.
Has there ever been any discussion to just sell it to them for a dollar, let them have it and if they, down the road, wanna sell it, we would have first right of refusal to buy it back for a dollar?
Well...
And then we wash our hands for it?
I think that if they continue to make some of the repairs that, and I understand, they have done a lot of repairs as, as we explained at past meetings, they did the extensive inside remodeling out of their budget. We have done the basic things, not to act like we're a landlord, but we put in the air conditioning, we did have budgeted last year or so a roof, which we still haven't gotten around to. Eventually it needs it. But they have done a lot of the cosmetics and internal remodeling and they paid for. Like I said, you know, if they were gonna continue to do that, we couldn't, it wouldn't be fair nor would it be smart on their part to agree to sell it back to us for a dollar if they're gonna do all that. I think the way it works right now is working good. We have the building. If for some reason, heaven forbid, Art on the Square no longer existed, it's the city's building to then determine this body, what's the best use for that property. It's a key piece of property and that piece of property is no different than why we got involved with the Meredith Home, to make sure that this city council has some say on what the entranceway to our downtown and on, right there on 159, what occupies that. And we were blessed to get this as a gift, so we really don't have to pay a lot for what we get out of it and when you look at, not a person in Art on the Square is getting paid a dime. They all volunteers and they do appreciate the use of that building. So we have a motion and we have a second on the floor. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the bid of twenty-three thousand, three ninety-one from Jack Schmidt Ford for the purchase of a one new three-quarter ton pickup truck for the Parks Department, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the bid of fifteen thousand, six ninety-two sixty from Shiloh Valley Equipment for the purchase of a two-zero turn mower, for two zero-turn mowers for the Parks Department. This was also recommended by the Park Board. Motion to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion, yes sir.
Your Honor, do we use this building at all for any city stuff?
It's been on occasion, but primarily it's Art on the Square. We've had, we go in there every year, they host a reception for us when we have Veterans' Day. There's been a few other times that we've used it for some special city things. We used it for the Paint to Town, we used it for, I can think of others, but not, it's not used regularly by the city. It's used primarily, they use it for a whole month for their boutique at Christmas, they use it for some art shows, they have some gallery showings, they use it for their, the whole month prior to Art on the Square, they're busy in there. They have meetings throughout the year. Art on the Square, from the minute the one's over, they start again to start for the next year and it's an ongoing process. So it's used often.
It's, I mean, it's a wonderful organization, they do great things. The question that has been raised to me and it's my job as an Alderman to provide the conduit to raise those questions is, if it's primarily used by Art on the Square, why are the taxpayers paying the utilities?
Well, if I remember, if you heard my explanation when this came up, probably during the budget, the first time, this building was given to the city by, at that time, longtime attorney Rick Heiligenstein, who since has passed away, was in that office there for probably, I don't know, thirty, forty years at Thirty Public Square. He came to Mayor Kern at that time, before I became mayor, and offered the building to the city and sat and discussed with Mayor Kern how they could, what they could use it for with some special way. Mark had indicated the art program because it just had had the first season or second season under its belt. They met with Patty Gregory and this is where it came from. When the question was raised to me back during the budget process, I was asked if we had a contract. I thought maybe we did have an agreement, not finding any and I had a brief conversation with Chairman Kern. He said, "No, everything at that time, the council was informed," but it was a handshake. So we agreed, if you remember, to put it into, to what we were currently, what we've had as a handshake for the last eleven to twelve years and what we've been living by, we put it to writing and Garrett worked with Tom Barnett, the treasurer of Art on the Square, and Patty Gregory and came up with this document. This reflects what the building's been used for, it reflects the way we've been handling it and it's a very, as you all know, I think we all agree, Art on the Square has been a fabulous catalyst for redevelopment downtown and for the city as a whole and, boy, I'd sure hate to change a good thing. But it's here tonight for you just to officially memorialize it and put it into a contract.
Has there ever been any discussion to just sell it to them for a dollar, let them have it and if they, down the road, wanna sell it, we would have first right of refusal to buy it back for a dollar?
Well...
And then we wash our hands for it?
I think that if they continue to make some of the repairs that, and I understand, they have done a lot of repairs as, as we explained at past meetings, they did the extensive inside remodeling out of their budget. We have done the basic things, not to act like we're a landlord, but we put in the air conditioning, we did have budgeted last year or so a roof, which we still haven't gotten around to. Eventually it needs it. But they have done a lot of the cosmetics and internal remodeling and they paid for. Like I said, you know, if they were gonna continue to do that, we couldn't, it wouldn't be fair nor would it be smart on their part to agree to sell it back to us for a dollar if they're gonna do all that. I think the way it works right now is working good. We have the building. If for some reason, heaven forbid, Art on the Square no longer existed, it's the city's building to then determine this body, what's the best use for that property. It's a key piece of property and that piece of property is no different than why we got involved with the Meredith Home, to make sure that this city council has some say on what the entranceway to our downtown and on, right there on 159, what occupies that. And we were blessed to get this as a gift, so we really don't have to pay a lot for what we get out of it and when you look at, not a person in Art on the Square is getting paid a dime. They all volunteers and they do appreciate the use of that building. So we have a motion and we have a second on the floor. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe at the next meeting, we're going to probably have Patty Gregory and some of her committee meeting, meeting members here for some recognition of their ongoing continuous thirteen years of commitment to the city with a successful program. Let's see, the next one is a...
Seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, Alderman Sillsby, we still got one more.
Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Bellevle and the St. Clair County Public Building Commission, which spells out the transfer and acquisition of property, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion.
One question.
Yes, sir.
So, reading through this agreement, I was, I'm reading this right, the Public Building Commission owns this instead of St. Clair County?
I think that's pretty much true with all that property.
They're the title owner. They're the title owner for this property and other prop, so they have the authority to make this decision without the St. Clair County Board needing to...
According to the county chairman and the building commission, that's true. City Attorney Harner spoke with them and worked out these details. And what we're really doing, ladies and gentlemen, for the people who are questioning this, we're basically swapping, for the most part, two properties, there's one little one tossed in there, but there's two properties we're basically swapping with the county and what we're doing is really just cleaning up. We're actually using the one over here and it's owned by them and their prop, their primarily using the one on A Street with the grants department and the health department every day and we're just basically making, cleaning it up on paper. Now, the one thing Alder, Mr. Harner was able to do, they did put in writing that we would continue to get to use A Street every evening and every weekend and holiday. So really and truthfully, we lose nothing on this deal. We do lose a little bit of the parking meter revenue, they're gonna give us all the meters back, but that lot needs resurfacing. And Tim, what did we say? We thought probably about a hundred and twenty thousand or something like that?
Could be around a hundred and fifty.
Could be around a hundred and fifty in the next year or so and they understand that and they're gonna assume that. So we're gonna lose a little revenue, but I will tell you, those quarters that go into the meeting, it take, the meters, takes a lot of those quarters to pay that hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next year or two.
We'll still be building for people to park at night.
And we can still park there every night after five and every weekend and holiday.
As a deed restriction.
And that's per the deed restriction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second about this intergovernmental agreement. Hearing none, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on. Alderman Seibert?
Yes, sir. Streets and Grades Committee and City Engineer have a motion to approve the preliminary engineering First, I'll address the funds issue. These funds are coming from the library's budget and the grant we got from the state. No further money is being asked from the city. So this money is library and state money. As far as the scope of the change orders, most of these are a result of things that were discovered once the project got underway. For example, the gutters and the gravity vents. Once we got on the roof and tore the roof off, we realized they needed to be replaced. Some others, some flooring repairs, again, once we started demolition, we realized that there were some further repairs that needed to be done that could not have been identified until...
They exposed it.
...were removed. And so that is, for the most part, what these change orders involve. There's a detailed list. There are a total of fifteen of what all of them actually are.
Are you still in budget?
We are still within budget, yes.
And were these change orders based on unit cost bids that were pre-existing, or did they have to come in and give us supplemental costs based on what they discovered?
They gave us costs based on what was discovered and the cost it would be to make these changes. Some of them were based on recommendations from IHPA. For example, the gutters had to be copper, no choice on that because of the historic nature of the building. Gravity vents, there were some restrictions there because the building was historic. So some of those, we really didn't have any flexibility in because of the type of building it is.
But you were pretty much expecting that this could happen once they tore it in there?
I mean, it's a hundred-year-old building, so, yeah, we knew there would be change orders.
Okay.
We just didn't know what they would be, how much they would be, and there will more than likely be additional change orders, because we're only about thirty percent into the project right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Hearing no other questions. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman White?
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Traffic Committee, I have two motions, and if it's...
Proceed.
All right, we'd like to combine these two.
Go ahead.
Vote to them. Okay. First one is a motion to create a no parking here at a corner on South High Street, east side, fifty-two feet from East Main, face of curb. The second motion is to amend Chapter Fifty-two of the traffic code for new signage at Henry Robb and Washington Schools. So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Hayden, to approve these two motions from traffic and have the proper ordinances drawn. Any question? All in favor of this motions, these motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next motion I'd like to ask, far as a motion coming from the mayor, to approve hiring Joshua Mandell and the Lawrence Group to complete drawings for renovations at four oh seven East Lincoln at the estimated maximum fee of four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand...four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is necessary for ADA improvements at this building. As we told you, I think, when we talked about the purchase of this building, we have some work to do with ADA bathrooms and a few minor items. We'll have a complete list for you. We're probably going to have to have a special council meeting a few days down the road so that we can stay on task to get people in there and meet our contract obligations for getting out of the other building that we sold. So we're waiting. Kenny, you're getting feedback now from...from...some...we're getting quotes. As we told you, and we were upfront about it, this thing is on a really tight, tight turnaround, because we were trying to coordinate so Bank of Belleville, who bought our property at two thirteen, could get the demolition done still in August so that they can get this building under roof before winter, and we want them to do that, because we want them to get out of seven twenty, so we can accelerate in doing the remodeling there.
What account, Mayor, is the four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five going to come?
It's going to have to come out of the general fund, because that building is not in a TIF. Now, we've already closed. We've already received the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the building, from Bank of Belleville, but as you know, the building cost us two hundred and thirty-five thousand. As was explained, we had a couple things in the general fund that Jamie, right before she left, I think, answered some of the questions either one night or in finance, that we feel comfortable right now that this small amount like this right now, we have, you know, the ability to cover, and we'll keep you posted.
I'll make a motion to approve Adam G.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Seibert. Any other discussions? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
No.
Ayes have it. Alderman Anthony?
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Police and Fire Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the elected officials' fire academy.
Second.
Motion by Anthony, second by Alderman Schmidt. This was brought up by Chief Poor, and I thought it's still best that we get permission from the council. It's going to be offered to the city council members if they would like to go through this training. The intent is that they could better understand the workings of the fire department. Now, this will not get you a badge or get you permission to ride on the truck or anything else.
No, I don't see it.
But it will get you an opportunity to attend these various trainings so that those of you who have limited experience or past exposure to the fire department can certainly be much more better versed when issues come to this council to be voted on or to be discussed at budget time. Yes, ma'am?
And I believe we talked about it being on the last or fourth...
Well, we're going to work out the proposed date yet. That...we're not including that in here tonight. Tom's still got to check a few things with scheduling at the firehouse, and we'll get back to you. We want to make...we want to approve the concept tonight. We have a motion, and we have a second. Hearing no other questions. All in favor of approving this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications?
A, request from John Wonderlick for the Belleville merchants to hold their sidewalk sale Friday, August first, and Saturday, August second, from two thousand fourteen, from eight AM to seven PM both days.
Objection, Your Honor. Say, read B and C.
B, communication from Royal Family Kids Camp, asking permission to have a five K race, the Royal Run, on Saturday, March twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, beginning at nine AM. It would begin and end at Huff Park. A copy of the route is attached. C, communication from Velo Force Racing Team, requesting permission to hold a competitive cycling event in the City of Belleville on August seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, from six thirty AM until five PM, and to close the city streets downtown during the race.
Motion to approve. Communications, A, B, and C.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman White. Any discussion? All in favor of approving these three communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty-one ninety-six. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of reading this motion by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-one ninety-six, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement for property transfers between the City of Belleville, Illinois, and St. Clair County Public Building Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Sillsby. I forgot we had two there, but that's okay. We did them separately. Any discussion on this motion to approve the resolution thirty-one ninety-six? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. We...I'd ask for a motion also, I'm sorry, to read Resolution thirty-one ninety-seven by title only. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I have one question. I'd like to have it explained why or what the Centerville Township is having to do with this.
Because Centerville Township has a section of the bike trail that's in their jurisdiction.
Okay, what section you got?
It's right there in Signal Hill. The first part, closest to Signal Hill. So we wanted to make sure that all government...this is unique, and we originated this with the...with the going after the grant in conjunction with Signal Hill School, et cetera, and we felt, after reviewing it, it's going to be best for nine-one-one purposes to call one, the City of Belleville, because there's like...you can see, there's like six different agencies that could be called, so it's going to be very confusing, probably going to have some confusion to the point where somebody could get hurt. So this is...just cleans up the language, and it would have to get these folks to all sign up, but we've had preliminary conversations with almost all. We have a motion, and we have a second for this resolution? I still have a write-in, I'm sorry. Tom, sorry. This is a motion. Okay. Thank you. All in favor of reading this motion thirty-one ninety-seven by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-one ninety-seven, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement concerning bike trail.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Who is the second?
Me.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any additional questions besides that one was raised? Hearing none. Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance seventy-seven ninety-seven and seventy-seven ninety-eight.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Sillsby. Any discussion? All in favor of reading these two ordinances as just stated by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number seventy-seven ninety-seven, a zoning ordinance regarding case forty-three, June fourteenth, Donna Gonzalez.
Any problems we have together? Go ahead and read the second.
B, ordinance number seventy-seven ninety-eight, ordinance authorizing lease between City of Belleville, Illinois, and Art on the Square Foundation Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve these two ordinances as just read, seventy-seven ninety-seven and seventy-seven ninety-eight. Any further discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White. Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any unfinished business? Yes, sir.
Just one quick question. Your Honor, first, I also want to thank everybody involved, finally get the sidewalks at ten East Washington correct. My question, though, is...it was stated at the last meeting that it was going to be around three thousand. My question is to the city attorney or city engineer yourself, if it was put in wrong by the contractor, why would we have to pay for it the second time? Why would the taxpayers have to pay for it the second time?
You want to tackle that, Garrett, or?
If we're talking about a potential claim, I think we ought to do that in executive session. I wasn't here the first time it was put in, so those are details that I'm not familiar with. That's fine. Can...I mean, are you going to go in executive session?
We are going executive session now.
Tonight? Okay.
Okay, we have a...any other questions? Ms. Lance, new business. We have a motor fuel claims in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on the motor fuel claims? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.